Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting of the C O D, meeting in lieu of Senate 2021. We will get into our roll call and a bunch of opening announcements and welcomes and all of that good stuff in a little bit. But the very first thing we want to do is come into the presence of our Lord and God and have some opening devotions. Reverend Mark Van De Zandt will lead us in that. He's our C O D member from classes Heartland. And he was the pastor, is the pastor of what was to be the convening church of Senate, so it seemed appropriate to have him open with devotions. So, Mark, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Paul. Good morning, everyone. It's good to be together today. I hope you can all hear me well. And if not, I hope somebody will mention that. But as Council delegate members, you know who I am. But for those who are live streaming this or will watch this later, just want to introduce myself as Paul has already done so, but I'll introduce myself as well. I'm Reverend Mark Van De Zandt. I am the pastor of First Christian Reformed Church in Orange City, Iowa. The church I pastor is celebrating its 150th anniversary this year, and as a result, we sent a request a few years ago to be the convening church at Senate this year. That request was granted. And as a result, this past weekend, I would have led the opening worship service at Dort University and been the president pro temp. Obviously, as we all know, that was not meant to be this year. As a result of that decision that was made a few months ago by the C O D to cancel Senate, the wrecker contacted me and asked me if I would be willing to lead devotions and to open up our C O D meetings this June. I agreed to her request. She did ask me if I was going to wear a tie today. I told her no, but then when I saw Colin with a tie on this morning, I got a little bit concerned. Maybe I should have, but this is what you get today. So in planning for this time, I was drawn to a theme for our devotions for today. The theme is the faithfulness of God. As we think about that theme this morning, Carol Spearing has agreed to share her screen with all of us for our devotions today. So thank you, Carol, for doing that. I really appreciate that. As I think about the faithfulness of God, I am first of all reminded of that faithfulness when it comes to my marriage. My wife Kim and I just celebrated our 23rd wedding anniversary this past Sunday, June 13, and you'll see a picture of two pictures there on your screen. The first one is on the left of the screen is on our wedding day. We had a wedding in Muskegon, Michigan. And that picture was taken on the shores of Lake Michigan. And the right is a picture of us in February this past year. And so 23 years of God's great faithfulness to us. In those 23 years, we have been blessed with three beautiful daughters. Kayla, our oldest, is 18 and just finished her first year at Dort. Emily, our middle daughter, is 16 and is a student at Unity Christian High School. And Amber, our youngest, is 12, and she is going to be a seventh grader next year at Orange City Christian School. We spent the last 23 years at five different locations. After our marriage at Allen Avenue CRC in Muskegon, Michigan, and our honeymoon to Florida for a couple of weeks, I moved into my wife's apartment in Kentwood, Michigan, and we lived there for six weeks. In August of 1998, we moved down to Kalamazoo, Michigan, where I did a year internship at Heritage CRC in Kalamazoo. From there, 1999, we moved to the Genesee and Hudsonville, Michigan areas, where I did another year internship at 12th Avenue CRC in Genesee and a six-month C P E experience at Pine Rest. On August 19, 2000, our family moved to Holland, Michigan, where we lived for almost 12 years and where I served at the oldest church in our denomination, Northolos Christian Reformed Church. And nine years ago this week in June of 2012, we moved to Orange City, Iowa, and have been here ever since, serving at what I heard was the third oldest Christian Reformed Church west of the Mississippi River. As I think about those 23 great years of marriage, the wonderful family Kim and I have been blessed with, all the places we have lived and the two great churches I've had the opportunity to serve in ministry at for almost 21 years. I can't help but think of my wife's favorite passage of scripture, which is Isaiah 25 verse 1. Listen to these words, "O Lord, you are my God. I will exalt you and praise your name. For in perfect faithfulness, you have done marvelous things, things planned long ago." As I look back at those 23 years of marriage, it is so true that God has been faithful. And in his perfect faithfulness, he has done marvelous things, things planned long ago. It's amazing to think about how God had the marriage my wife and I had all planned out before it even began. Who would have thought that a young man from Wapon, Wisconsin, who went to Dort College would meet and marry a young woman from Muskegon, Michigan, who went to Calvin College? And to think that God had it all planned out in his perfect faithfulness. You see, after I graduated from Dort College in 1995, I proceeded to go to Calvin Seminary. It was there that I took my three-week crash course in Hebrew. And I met another student there whose name was John. John had just gotten married a week before seminary began. John and I started studying together, and we would often go to his townhouse where he and his wife Cindy lived. Labor Day weekend of 1995, in between our crash course and the first semester, John and Cindy invited me, along with some of their friends, to attend the Meyer Food Fair in downtown Grand Rapids. Maybe some of you remember that, and the fireworks on the grand. Among those that were invited was my future wife, Kim. Kim and I did not have fireworks on the grand that night, though, but did start dating in February of 1996. We then got engaged in August of 1997 and got married in June of 1998. In perfect faithfulness, God had it all planned out. But that is not only true in my marriage, it's also been true in my ministry. In the spring of 1999, I had planned to be a candidate for ministry. My supervisor at that time didn't think I was ready for full-time ministry, and he wouldn't give me a good recommendation. As a result, I decided not to fight the battle, but to do another internship, which allowed me to serve in Genesee, Michigan for a year. It was also in March of 1999 that I was actually scheduled the interview at Northolos CRC in Holland, Michigan. I had to tell them that I couldn't interview, but I still ended up preaching there, but that was it. In December of 1999, when I was working at 12th Avenue CRC, I said to my wife one night, I said, "I wonder where Northolos CRC is at in the process." Less than a week later, I got a call from a member of the search committee at Northolos, wondering where I was at in the process. To make a long story short, I interviewed, received the call, and accepted that call in the summer of 2000. It just shows to me that in perfect faithfulness, God had it all planned out. Move forward a few years to December of 2011. I had served my church in Holland for 11-plus years. It was a great fit for us, a wonderful community, and our church grew in my 11-plus years there from 275 members to just over 400 members. And we had 100 children under the age of 10. It was a great place to serve, and our church had also hired an associate pastor about nine years into my ministry. And after serving with this pastor for a couple of years, I realized that our leadership styles were different, and a change was probably necessary. So I told that to the elders on a Monday evening in December at our elders' meeting. The next day, the next day on that cold December Tuesday evening, as I was grilling burgers, I got a phone call from the chair of the search committee at First CRC in Orange City. He shared with me what was going on in the church and some of the struggles the church had had, and I started to feel the tug to possibly move. In March of 2012, the church voted to extend a call to me. And in April of 2012, I accepted the call, and our family moved nine years ago this week. All that reminds me that in perfect faithfulness, God had it all planned out. I've seen that in my marriage and in my ministry. And as I continue to think about the perfect faithfulness of God in my ministry, it is by God's perfect faithfulness that I've had the privilege to serve at two congregations that while I was serving, celebrated their 150th anniversaries. Northolos CRC in 2007, along with our denomination, and now First CRC next month in 2021. Again, all of that reminds me that in perfect faithfulness, God had it all planned out. God is faithful. God is very faithful. And this morning, as we begin our time functioning as a C O D, and before we begin our wide array of discussions and decision-making, I want to help us focus our attention and think about the faithfulness of God. To help us do that, I want to do a little Bible study of sorts and lead us through some scripture passages that help us see the faithfulness of God. All the scripture passages are going to be on the PowerPoint you see, but if you want to have your Bibles handy, you're welcome to do that. And just to let you know, I'm using the 1984 edition of the N I V. That's the edition our church uses in the pews on Sunday and the edition I have used for the entirety of my ministry. With all that said, let's begin to look a little bit more closely today at the faithfulness of God. As we look at scripture, one of the things we notice when we think about the faithfulness of God is that God is faithful because he keeps his promises. In Deuteronomy 7 verse 9, it says, "Know therefore that the Lord your God is God." He is the faithful God, keeping his covenant of love to a thousand generations of those who love him and keep his commands. God is faithful. He keeps his promises. The Psalmist writes about that in Psalm 145, "The Lord is gracious and compassionate, slow to anger and rich in love." The Lord is good to all. He has compassion in all he has made. "All you have made will praise you, O Lord. Your saints will extol you. They will tell of the glory of your kingdom and speak of your might, so that all men may know of your mighty acts and the splendor, glorious splendor of your kingdom." Your kingdom is an everlasting kingdom, and your dominion endures through all generations. The Lord is faithful to all his promises and loving toward all he has made. God is faithful. He keeps his promises. When I think of that fact, that God keeps his promises, I am drawn to the story of Noah. Noah and his family spent, as that one song says, "What felt like hours and days and years and ages in the ark." And when they got out of the ark, God made a promise to them. We read that promise in Genesis 8. "Then Noah built an altar to the Lord and taking some of all the clean animals and clean birds. He sacrificed burnt offerings on it. The Lord smelled the pleasing aroma and said in his heart, 'Never again will I curse the ground because of man, even though every inclination of his heart is evil from childhood. And never again will I destroy all living creatures as I had done, as long as the earth endures, seed, dime, and harvest, cold and heat, summer and winter, day and night, will never cease.'" God keeps his promises. And then right after that, in Genesis 9, we read these words, "This is the sign of the covenant I am making between me and you and every living creature with you, a covenant for all generations to come. I've set my rainbow in the clouds, and it will be a sign of the covenant between me and the earth. Whenever I bring clouds over the earth, and the rain will appear in these clouds, I will remember my covenant between me and you and all living creatures of every kind. Never again will the waters become a flood to destroy all life. Whenever the rainbow appears in the clouds, I will see it and remember the everlasting covenant between God and all living creatures of every kind on the earth. There has always been seed, dime, and harvest, cold and heat, summer and winter, day and night, and floods have never destroyed the whole world." God is faithful. He keeps his promises. And we see that great promise from God in Genesis 3, 14 to 15, when he gave this messianic promise. He said, "Because you have done this to the serpent, cursed are you above all the livestock and all the wild animals. You will crawl on your belly, and you will eat dust all the days of your life. And I will put emity between you and the woman and between your offspring and hers. He will crush your head, and you will strike his heel." My friends, Jesus Christ came and fulfilled that promise. He crushed through his death the head of Satan. And Jesus promised to his disciples that he would rise from the grave, and he kept that promise. And there was a promise given to the disciples that Jesus would come back again. And we can take God at his word, and Christ will come back again. God is faithful. He keeps his promises. But in scripture, we also see that there's another way to see that God is faithful. He not only keeps his promises, we also see that he never leaves us or forsakes us. That great Psalm that we often begin to worship, whether I do, "I lift up my eyes to the hills. Where does my help come from?" Psalm 121. "My help comes from the Lord, the maker of heaven and earth. He will not let your foot slip. He watches over you, will not slumber. Indeed, he watches over Israel, will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord watches over you. The Lord is your shade at your right hand. The sun will not harm you by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord will keep you from all harm. He will watch over your life. The Lord will watch over your coming and going, both now and forevermore." God never leaves us. He never forsakes us. David in Psalm 139 wanted to remind himself and others of that when he said these words, "O Lord, you have searched me and you know me. You know when I sit and when I rise, you perceive my thoughts from afar. You discern my going out and my lying down. You are familiar with all my ways. Before word is on my tongue, you know it completely, O Lord. You have me in behind and before you have laid your hand upon me, such knowledge is too wonderful for me, too lofty for me to attain. Where can I go from your Spirit? Where can I flee from your presence? If I go up to the heavens, you are there. If I make my bed in the depths, you are there. If I rise on the wings of the dawn, if I settle on the far side of the sea, even there, your hand will guide me. Your right hand will hold me fast." God never leaves us. He never forsakes us. God is faithful to us. Jesus also talked about that in his Great Commission. Matthew 28, 18 to 20, he said these words, "All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Therefore, go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to obey everything I have commanded you. And surely I am with you always, to the very end of the age." God never leaves us. He never forsakes us. And Jesus shared that with his disciples when he promised them the Holy Spirit in John 14. Jesus said, "If you love me, you will obey what I command. And I will ask the Father, and he will give you another counselor to be with you forever, the Spirit of truth. The world cannot accept him, because neither sees him nor knows him. Because you know him, for he lives with you; but you know him, for he lives with you and will be within you. I will not leave you as orphans. I will come to you." God is faithful. Never leaves us or forsakes us. The writer of Hebrews puts it this way, "God has said, 'Never will I leave you. Never will I forsake you.' So we say with confidence, 'The Lord is my helper. I will not be afraid.'" God is faithful. He keeps his promises. He never leaves us or forsakes us. And finally, we also see in scripture that God is faithful because he is faithful to the very end. The shortest chapter in the book of Psalms, Psalm 117, puts it beautifully when it says this, "Praise the Lord, all you nations. Extol him, all you peoples, for great is his love toward us, and the faithfulness of our Lord endures forever." The faithfulness of our Lord endures forever. Praise the Lord. We serve as a Christian Reformed denomination, a faithful God. A faithful God who in his perfect faithfulness has done marvelous things, things planned long ago. A faithful God who keeps his promises, who never leaves us or forsakes us, and who is faithful to the very end. As we reflect upon that today, I just want to ask a question. How do we respond to that faithfulness of God? How do we respond to the God who keeps his promises, who never leaves us or forsakes us, and is faithful to the very end? As we reflect upon that, as members of the C O D, I want to look at what Jesus says to the church in Smyrna in Revelation 2 verses 8 to 11. Jesus is writing to the church in Smyrna, and according to the N I V Study Bible, Smyrna is a difficult place to be a Christian because of the large and actively hostile Jewish population. So Jesus encourages them with these words. "To the angel of the church in Smyrna write, these are the words of him who is the first and the last, who died and came to life again. I know your afflictions and your poverty, yet you are rich. I know the slander of those who say they are Jews and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan. Do not be afraid of what you are about to suffer. I tell you, the devil will put some of you in prison to test you, and you will suffer persecution for 10 days. Be faithful, even to the point of death. And I will give you the crown of life. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. He who overcomes will not be hurt at all by the second death." The church of Smyrna, which was dealing with hostility, is to be faithful to the very end because God has been faithful to her. And I believe in the Christian Reformed denomination, we are in a time of great hostility. Hostility to the Christian faith, hostility to biblical truth, and hostility to each other. In response to God's faithfulness, may we be faithful to the very end, even to the point of death. May we remain faithful, remain steadfast, and remain a loyal people to God, to our Savior Jesus Christ, and to God's Word. May we never waver from the Word of God, and may that lead us and guide us in all the decisions we make. And then may we, as my favorite verses in Proverbs 3, 5 to 6, share "Trust in the Lord with all our heart, and lean not on our own understanding. In all our ways, may we acknowledge him, and he will make our paths straight." My fellow C O D members, we need to trust God. We need to hold fast to him and be faithful to him to the very end because he is faithful to us. Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we are grateful that you are a faithful God, that you are faithful to us, to your church. We are grateful that you are a God who keeps promises. You are always with us, and you are faithful to the very end. May we be faithful to you as you have been faithful to us. May we trust you with all our heart, soul, mind, and strength, and may we lean on your understanding. In all our ways, may we acknowledge you. And may we then be kept straight on the path. God, we thank you that we can gather together as a C O D on behalf of Senate this week, these next couple of days, and we pray that you will bless our conversations. We pray that you will guide and direct the things that are said. And we pray, God, that we, as a Christian Reformed denomination and as a council of delegates, will remain faithful because you have been faithful to us. Now, we pray this all in the precious name of our faithful Savior, Jesus Christ, and all God's people said, amen. As we conclude our devotional time together, I invite you to join me in singing the song, "Great is Thy Faithfulness." You will be on mute, but please sing along with me. We will sing the three verses and then the chorus only after the third verse. And I know it's going to seem a little bit strange, but would you please rise where you're at, and we're going to sing together, and I'm going to give you an F sharp because I believe that is the key that we're going to sing this song in. So please rise with me. "Great is thy faithfulness, O God, my Father. There is no shadow of turning with thee. Thou changeth not by compassion; they fail not, as thou hast been, thou forever wilt be. Summer and winter and springtime and harvest, sun, moon, and stars in their courses above. Join with all nature in manifold witness to thy great faithfulness, mercy, and love. Pardon for sin and a peace that endure thy own dear presence to cheer and to guide. Strength for today and bright hope for tomorrow. Blessings are mine with ten thousand beside. Great is thy faithfulness, great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning new mercies I see. All I have yielded thy and have provided. Great is thy faithfulness, bought unto me." Mr. Chairman, Paul De Vries, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for reminding us of the faithfulness of God. Thank you for reminding us that some can sing on tune and on key, and some cannot, and yet still, the Lord our God is faithful and good. We are delighted to be together as a council of delegates, meeting in special session in lieu of Senate 2021. And once again, I welcome those of you who are watching this live broadcast on YouTube. Our first item of business is to duly constitute ourself as a body, and so I'm going to read through the roll call. Now, again, since we do have people listening and watching this live, in order to get yourself in front of them so they can see who this full body is, they can really only see the person who is speaking at the time, I understand. So when I call your classes and then your name, would you please speak and say, "I am present," or "I am here," or "I am delighted to be here," some short phrase that will get the camera to cue on your face, and people can see who constitutes this body. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize first off, but I do stumble over names at times. Please correct me. Just say your name correctly so that people know who you really are as we're here as a body. So I'm going to start with our Canadian classes and at-large delegates, and then I'll move on to the U S delegates. Classes Alberta North, Michelle Cool.
Hi, I'm here.
And Alberta, the South Saskatchewan, Heather Cowie.
I'm here.
And B C Northwest, Andy De Rider.
Morning, Paul. I am present and delighted to be here as always.
Wonderful. Thanks, Andy. B C Southeast, Bev Banstra.
Good morning, Paul. I'm happy to be here, too.
Good. And from Chatham, Mark Ver Bruggen.
Good morning, Paul. I am present.
And from Eastern Canada, Bernie Becker.
Present for my last meeting of the C O D.
All right, you sound a little too excited about that, Bernie. We're glad to have you with us. Hamilton, William Koopmans.
Thank you, Paul. Pleased to be present.
And classes Huron, Ralph Wigboldus.
Good morning, Paul. It's good to be here with you.
And Niagara, Wendy De Young.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be here.
And Quinte, Frederick Wind. Frederick from Quinte, are you with us?
I am. I am, yes.
There you are.
I'm here.
Good morning. Welcome. And from Toronto, Sam Cooper.
Hello, everyone. I too am here. All of me, actually.
Welcome, Sam, all of you. And from our, we have a couple of at-large delegates who are with us, Greta Loomis.
Hi, I'm happy to be here.
Good. And Melissa Van Dyke.
Good morning. I'm here.
Welcome. Moving on to our U S classes and our at-large delegate, Arizona, Tony Lara.
Good morning. Present. Hello.
Welcome. And Atlantic Northeast, Sam Sutter.
Good morning, Paul. I certainly miss seeing you all in person, but I'm here online.
Wonderful. And California South, Harold Casado.
Yeah, Caicedo. Thank you. From the beautiful California, I'm here.
Welcome. And from Central California, Fernando Del Rosario.
I'm here. Please, like Bernie, pleased to be on my last meeting with the C O D.
All right, welcome to you as well. And from Central Plains, Brian Oxner.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here.
And from Chicago South, Jay Wilson.
Good morning.
Good morning, I am here. This is also my last meeting sadly.
Sadly, there you go, Jay. Well said. And Columbia, Gary Boss.
I'm here and I'll also miss the C O D meetings.
Okay. And Georgetown, Jim Roskam.
Greetings, Jim Roskam. Glad to be here this morning.
And Grand Rapids East, Jeannie Engelhardt.
Good morning, I'm pleased to be here.
And from Grand Rapids North, Dari Mabuta.
Good morning, glad to be here this morning.
Welcome. And Grand Rapids South, David Struck.
Yep, I'm here. Good morning, everybody.
Welcome. And um our Granville delegate is not able to be here, so she's absent with notice. From Greater Los Angeles, Tom Byma.
Good morning, it's good to be here.
Welcome. And from Hackensack, Sheila Holmes.
Good morning, I am present.
And um also our hominy uh delegate is not able to be with us. So from Heartland, we've already heard from you, but please say hello again, Mark.
Oh, I'm here.
Wonderful. And from Holland, Wayne Brower.
Good morning. Um, good morning, I'm here, thank you.
And from Hudson, George Young.
Good morning, glad to see your shining faces.
And Icota, John Lee.
When is this? Present.
And from Iliana, uh, Joe Ficama.
Glad to be here. Uh, can't wait to meet y'all in person in the fall.
Great. Kalamazoo, Michael Cucci.
Good morning, I am present.
And from Coam, Jonathan Kim.
Good morning, I'm here. Good to see you guys.
Welcome. And from Lake Erie, Lori Harkema.
Good morning, everyone. I'm pleased to be here.
And from Lake Superior, Michaelton Haken.
Uh, good morning, Paul and everyone. Uh, glad to be with you here this morning from Minnesota.
And from Mincota, Roger Sparks.
Uh, good morning, also from Minnesota. Glad to be with you.
Good. And from Muskegon, Drew Sweetman.
Good morning, greetings from beautiful Fremont, Michigan.
And from North Cascades, Ari Vander Zouwen.
Good morning, glad to be here with you this morning.
Good. And from North Central Iowa, Wendell Davalar.
Greetings from Minnesota, representing North Central Iowa.
And from Northern Illinois, Arnie Sculte.
Good morning, uh, C O D, glad to be here.
Good. And from Northern Michigan, Bruce DeCam. Bruce DeCam from Northern Michigan, are you with us?
He's waving at us.
Oh, okay, maybe he's having problems uh with his uh speaker.
But he's definitely here. I'll speak on his behalf.
Okay, I thought I saw him too earlier. So welcome, Bruce DeCam. We hope you get your uh uh speaker figured out so that uh we can hear you as well. And Pacific Nor-
Did my mic. Hi, everybody, I'm here. I'm glad to see you all. Thank you.
There we go. Welcome, Bruce.
Sorry.
That's all right. And from Pacific Northwest, Sherry Fakama. Sherry from Pacific Northwest, are you with us?
Yes, I'm happy to be here in the Pacific Northwest, yeah, with you all. Good morning.
Good morning. And from Red Mesa, Laura Copley.
Good morning, everyone. Just a heads up, my screen has been freezing quite a bit. So then I'll turn off my video so that, you know, we're having a fifty-five degree uh jump today from, we woke up at forty-five degrees and it's going to be a hundred degrees by by noon. So uh maybe, maybe that's affecting my broadband, but just a heads up. Glad to be here.
Thanks, Laura.
How can a screen freeze at those temperatures?
And we have Rocky Mountain, Kelly Vanderwoody.
Kelly Vanderwoody, I think I'm here. I'm still up for debate.
All right, well, we'll let you know later whether we think you're here or not, all right, Kelly?
Okay.
All right. And from Southeast U uh U S, Jose Bayona.
Jesus Bayona.
Jesus Bayona, sorry, Jesus. And from uh Thornapple Valley, uh Paul DeVries. That should be Paul DeVries, but I am here. And from Wisconsin, Paula Coldageli.
Good morning, everybody, from uh the Milwaukee area in Brookfield.
And from Yellowstone, Peter DeVries.
Good morning, everyone, I'm present.
And from Zealand, Tyler Wagamaker.
Classes Zealand has arrived, Paul.
Excellent. And we have one at large delegate from the U S and that's Elsa Fenema.
I am here and very thankful to be here. Good morning, everyone.
All right, good morning. Well then, on behalf of the uh C O D um operating in lieu of Senate twenty twenty one, I will declare us officially constituted uh with the role that you just heard from our various classes and our at large members. Once again, I want to welcome all of you and especially you delegates who are serving today. I know we uh regularly serve together as the council of delegates. Today, we serve in a little different capacity uh regarding um Senate. And that is why we are also live streaming, although we didn't do that last year when we served in lieu of Senate. We were still getting used to the technology and weren't sure we could make everything work. Uh, we trust that uh you who are live streaming are able to see us. We won't be able to hear you or see you, but um at least you can participate in some way and we're glad that you're here. We also have um many staff with us, our executive director Colin Watson is here as well as uh many other staff. Um, a couple that you delegates should remember and know about, and that is uh Shirley DeVries and um Carol Spearing. Uh, there are I T people, so if you're having any trouble, you can always chat with them. Um, and they will help you figure out um your difficulties. Um, we also have at least one representative from the banner with us. Um, and so we have some other people who are participating on Zoom uh as well, uh along with our staff. We're going um this morning and this afternoon to be working through our advisory committee reports. Our standing committees of the C O D are functioning as advisory committees in this special meeting in lieu of Senate. We'll simply work through them, starting with Advisory Committee One and um concluding with Advisory Committee Five. We'll be meeting in this session right up until uh one P M eastern. And then we'll take a half hour break uh at close to that time as possible. We'll come back from one thirty and we'll meet until three thirty. So we have two two hour sessions today. And then we'll more or less repeat that pro- uh process tomorrow. Um, we'll get as far as we can today and then we'll take up the other advisory committee reports that we haven't got to or any other matters um on Wednesday morning um at one P M or is it one thirty? I should look at my own agenda. Uh, tomorrow at one thirty, yes, it's uh yes, one thirty tomorrow. Um, we have a presentation of the candidates. So even if we aren't done, all of our advisory committee work, we'll make sure we're done with that piece of work in which we approve candidates. And then we will receive the candidates at at one thirty uh tomorrow. Uh, there's a special presentation for that. I saw that David Cole is uh with us a little earlier. He's one of the staff with us. Uh, we look forward to that tomorrow. If we haven't finished um any of our other business, we'll conclude that after the presentation of the candidates. Um, so we'll just see how well we uh can move along on these uh two days. I have a number of additional announcements just to remind us of how we're proceeding. And I say this mostly for the delegates and staff, but also for our guests, so you sort of understand our procedures. And we have, we are adopting, um, we are adapting some of our normal protocols so that we can more closely resemble what takes place in Senate. So it's worth um just listening to this um uh carefully. I already spoke about the technology experts that you can uh reach um via chat. We will be using the speaker queue uh in order to speak and we'll be using the yes, no voting links on the C O D website during our plenary sessions. Remember how these work? Click on the voting and speaker queue link under the C O D banner on the site homepage. If you haven't already done so, you'll need to accept permissions the first time you click on speaker queue or voting links in order to get it to work. We will be using the voting queue more regularly and doing less stuff by consensus or by rule of the chair, given that we're doing synatical business and we want to make sure we have a good record uh of everything. Occasionally, if we're taking a lot of uh uh quick votes in which it seems like we're either unanimous on or nearly unanimous, I may ask for a show of hands. These are the sort of votes that if we were in person, we would take with a simple voice vote. Um, when I ask for a show of hands, um, the purpose for doing that is to keep the process moving along a little quicker than having to vote in the queue every time. Um, I will ask all in favor to uh raise their hand, just raise your hand right by your face so that everyone could see it. Um, I'll toggle through my various screens and be able to see all of you, so you'll keep your hand up for a few seconds. And then I'll ask if anyone is uh not in favor, you'll hold up your hand. Uh, the rest of you also can toggle through your screen and I will try to only use that process when it's pretty clear to me that we are nearly unanimous on something that will just help us move along um the process. Anyone at any time, however, can ask us to use the voting queue and I will always honor that. Um, so if you think it's important that we use the voting queue to vote, uh, you may certainly ask for that, even if I'm going to ask for a um a show of hands. Zoom does offer real time captioning. I think that was automatically turned on for us. But if you need to turn it on, you can click live transcript in the menu at the bottom and then select um show subtitles, depending on what version of Zoom you have, that might work a little differently. Um, you can also get rid of closed captioning in that same way. If the little words streaming across the stream bother you, you can uh get rid of those uh words. As I've already announced, we are live streaming uh this session uh via YouTube and we're also recording uh the session. You should see a little note up in the left hand corner of your screen letting you know that. Um, delegates and advisors are asked to follow Senate's guidelines to avoid on uh inappropriate use of social media contact with non delegates during plenary sessions. Because such use might compromise the transparency and integrity of the deliberative process. In other words, don't text your friends saying, how should I vote on such and such? Um, and ask for their input into it. We want to be a deliberative body that is making the uh the decision collectively. Um, registering a negative vote, uh, you may do so obviously at any time. Uh, but I'm going to ask that you do so verbally and do so right after we vote, if you want a negative vote recorded. I know in the past in the C O D, we've used the chat feature for that. Uh, but we had some difficulty in the past keeping up with the chat feature at time. And then there was some confusion over who asked for it and who didn't. So we're going to ask that that um uh, if you have a negative vote that you wish to register, do so immediately at the time. Just uh call it out, get my attention and we will do that. Also, um, following synatical rules as well, you need to do that immediately following um the vote. Um, the C O D Executive Committee did meet on June two to review some late agenda supplement material. And really the only thing were the board appointments and reappointments to um Calvin Theological Seminary. So that's the only supplement that's been added and hopefully you've had a chance uh to look at that. Um, just a couple of, uh, one more note and then a thing we have to take action on before we get to our advisory committees. If you've been to Senate before, you know that typically when an advisory committee makes the report, there's both a chair and a reporter who come to the front and stand behind the side podium there. And either of them uh can speak to the matter of the report. Um, in this case, we have simply our chairs of our committees will be functioning also as the reporter. The chairs have the privilege of the floor and can uh jump in whenever they need to. So the chairs who are giving the reports for our advisory committees don't need to queue up. The only other person that that's true for is our executive director Colin Watson. If he wants to speak to an issue, um, Colin, you'll simply need to jump in and get my attention and um uh we'll honor that. The rest of staff speak when um they're asked a particular question, uh, or of course, when we're dealing with a matter um from the advisory committees that deal with something that'd be appropriate to them to speak to. Those of you who are chairs of our advisory committees, you're free, of course, to call on staff and ask them to speak whenever you think it would be appropriate. Other delegates, you may do so as well. If you'd like to hear someone uh from staff address an issue, just simply uh get in the speaker queue and ask for that. Um, and of course, I will honor that uh process. Finally, in this lengthy uh length of announcements as to how we're going to proceed, I do have one item um that I want to bring before you that uh we want to approve before we go any further. And this is recommended by the Council of Delegates Executive Committee. And that is that the C O D on behalf of Senate twenty twenty one, in light of the anticipated heavy agenda for Senate twenty twenty two and given the conversations that have already begun with with regard to the efficient use of time, task the program committee with a mandate to further explore options for the meeting of Senate twenty twenty two. This could include consultation with a design team consisting of staff and significant um participants at Senate. Uh, this approval is being requested from the council of delegates since it, since it might be perceived as an expansion of the ordinary mandate of the program committee. The program committee will be asked to bring a preliminary report to the C O D in October and a final recommendation to the C O D in February of twenty twenty two. In short, what this is asking approval for is to have our program committee, and those are the officers from the last Senate that met in twenty nineteen to work on thinking uh about Senate twenty twenty two and changes that could be made, adjustments to the schedule and so forth. So that Senate twenty twenty two can do its business well. As we've discussed before on the C O D, um, we are all aware that Senate twenty twenty two will have a heavy agenda in part because we've had to um cancel Senate two years in a row now. So this is a good way to get that process going. The program committee has agreed to do this. Um, and of course, the chair of that uh committee is with us, William Koopmans, um, if we so ask them. And the C O D, as you'll notice here, will get a preliminary report in our October meeting. And uh then in February, we will approve just exactly how that process will go. So all you would be approving right now is to authorize the program committee, along with the help of staff and others uh to begin doing that work. So that will be considered a motion on the floor in front of us from the executive committee. Is there any discussion um on that motion? You can um use the speaker queue if you wish to speak uh to that motion. Any discussion on the motion? I'm not seeing anyone in the speaker queue and I'm not hearing anything. So this is our first chance to do a hand vote. All those in favor of asking the program committee to do this work, please raise your hand. And hold it there for a few seconds. All right, thank you. You may put your hands down. Are there any opposed to that? Please raise your hand if you are opposed. All right, and that motion carries. Uh, thank you, everyone. And now we come to the heart of our agenda, I believe. Um, and that is uh advisory committee uh number one, uh, which is chaired uh by uh William Koopmans. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to you, uh, William. And we'll make sure, if you would, William, just make sure everyone has the right material in front of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So the material that we have before us is listed as the document Advisory Committee One. On the top of that document, you should see the chair and the vice chair of the committee listed. And then the first point is addressing structure and leadership. So that's the document that we ought to have before us. So that's the document that we ought to have before us. To just make a couple of comments from the outset with regard to this this material. When we receive this material and this mandate as an advisory committee, we recognize that there were items in here that were going to be difficult. There was a great deal of material to work through. We had about a hundred pages and then received some late correspondence as well in addition to that. So there was a lot of material to work through. And some of the material is emotionally complex and it is material that is potentially divisive. And so we went into this meeting with um considerable fear, trembling and prayer. Um, but we felt that that prayer was honored by our God. We were able to have a conversation that was gracious. And I think it's safe to say that at the out uh the outcome of it, there's probably no one on the committee that thought that the observations, the recommendations or the grounds would exactly say exactly what they would want it to say. Probably everyone felt if I wrote it as an individual, I would write this differently. But it received the collective approval of the committee. There is one case on one of the recommendations where one of our members registered a negative vote. And we want to simply recognize from the outset that registering a negative vote was an option that was given to us in lieu of a minority report. So this is a this is a session in lieu of Synod and then in lieu of doing some of the things the way Synod does, we also have other options. That, of course, is a time necessity. An advisory committee had no option really to have a majority report and a minority report. But to respect the integrity of the process, we were all given guidelines that rather than preparing a minority report, those who did not agree completely with the recommendation had the option to be able to register a negative vote and therefore reserve the right to speak against the motion or some aspects of the motion in the plenary session. Uh, with those words of introduction, Mr. Chair, we turn to the first item, addressing structure and leadership. It ought to be noted that for that part of the meeting, Laurie Harkema as our vice chair led the meeting simply as a precaution against any possible potential appearance of a conflict of interest. Seeing that I'm a member of the Canada Corps, served on the Structure and Leadership Task Force and then also serve as Chair of the Synatical Programs Committee. It's difficult to avoid material that we've all had or in one way or another, some contact with in our previous roles within the Council of Delegates. This material, I can simply say, was all assigned to Advisory Committee One because of the natural connection between Synatical Services and Advisory Committee One. So that's just by way of clarification and background. Materials are before us, a whole list of the various matters that were part of the material for consideration. And then I ask your advice, uh Paul, as chair, do you want me to read the observations or do you want me to move simply to the recommendations? The observations are not long. It won't take long to read, but I would uh welcome your decision on that.
Yeah, I think you should read them. As you note, they're not long. Plus, we do have some people watching and it will help them understand what we're acting on. So please read those as well, William.
Okay, thank you. So the first uh item is addressing structure and leadership. And there were two overtures that had been received requesting in essence that there be a discontinuation of proposed structural changes and a reverting back to precisely the way matters were uh prior to this conversation about structure and leadership. As observations, we appreciate the intent of the overtures one and two to emphasize our unity as a binational church. We also appreciate their commitment to ensuring that good order and proper process has been followed. Yet we believe that the C O D has acted with the same intent and commitment. The overtures contain some inaccurate and or incomplete information. For example, there has been no attempt to create two denominations. The intent has only been to contextualize ministries in an optimal way and to be compliant with government regulations. Similarly, the C O D has mandated the CRCNA Canada Corporation to maintain fiduciary matters. Synod has endorsed and supported bylaws for CRCNA Canada Corporation. And as such, this action was not in violation of church order. Because the overtures were written and submitted by the March twenty twenty one deadline, we believe that some of the concerns within them may have been dealt with at the May twenty twenty one C O D meeting. The Structure and Leadership Task Force, SALT, recommendations may make elements of these overtures moot. Finally, we recognize that the current situation in terms of senior leadership positions and working relationships is untenable for much longer. Practically, it does not seem possible to halt the process at this time. I could just interject here. Uh, this is also in view of pending retirements and timeline for completions of terms of service and and retirement. In addition, it should be noted that the decisions or actions of the C O D with regard to these matters are not final. These decisions will be presented to Senate twenty twenty two and churches and classes. We'll have ample opportunity to respond to them before a new structure is finalized. Leads us to our recommendations that the C O D on behalf of Synod not accede to overture one and two with the grounds. In appreciation of the intent of the overtures to emphasize unity as a binational denomination, we affirm that this has also been the intent of the SALT report, the C O D and the CRCNA Canada Corporation as they made decisions. Some of the information in the overtures, as noted in the background and observations above, is based on incomplete and or inaccurate information. The C O D has passed the SALT report that addresses some of these concerns. The CRCNA Canada Corporation and the C O D have been tasked with maintaining fiduciary and legal matters. This includes being proactive and responsible when it comes to charitable law. As such, their actions were not out of order. And all actions taken by CRCNA Canada Corporation have been reviewed by the C O D. These decisions will be reviewed by Senate twenty twenty two. Churches and classes will have ample ample opportunity to respond to the actions before the decisions are finalized. And uh, there's a second recommendation that's there and um perhaps it's an unnecessary recommendation and you could uh simply rule if that's the case, uh Mr. Chair. Uh, seeing that the recommendation is not to accede to the overtures one and two, that would probably already uh indicate that that's the answer to the overtures one and two. So it may be redundant to have that stated in the second recommendation. And and you could simply rule that if that's the case, but this then is the recommendation coming forth from the Advisory Committee One with regard to structure and leadership.
Thank you, William. That uh recommendation is in front of us for voting and I think William is exactly correct. That number two is sort of redundant. Uh, it's all rolled together as one, so we'll vote on it as one as one piece that our answer to overture one and two would be not to accede for the grounds presented with the background material. So let's have discussion on this matter before uh we vote. Is there any uh discussion? Please use the speaker queue. Um, if you wish to speak uh to this recommendation that's in front of us. And Laura, I oh, you're not there anymore. I think Laura Copley's name was there briefly, but it's gone. I see her shaking her head on the screen, so. Um, I don't have anyone in the speaker queue at the moment, but I'll give you all a moment to um uh be ready to speak to this motion if you wish. Seeing no one in the speaker queue uh and hearing no one shout out that they're not ready, um, I believe that we are ready to vote on recommendation number one from Advisory Committee Number One. Uh, I should say this is uh recommendation C one. Please use the voting queue to vote yes or no for this recommendation. Uh, use the voter queue to vote yes or no. If you vote yes, you are voting uh to not accede to the overture. If you vote no, um, you are voting against your advisory committee. Please take a moment and vote yes or no. And then again, for those of you watching live, our um I T folks uh track this and I'll be notified via the chat of the result of the voting. And I'll report that to the group. Takes just a few seconds. All right, uh, that motion uh that motion carries uh overwhelmingly, um, as you could probably tell by the lack of discussion. And I should mention, I I see one this person in the chat say that their speaker queue is not working. That always seems to happen with one or two of us. Can't quite get it to work. I'm going to ask you to chat directly with Shirley DeVries. Her name ought to be right at the top of our list of names. If you can't get your speaker queue to work and you want to vote, do that with Shirley directly, since she's the one that's tallying it anyways. That way you you don't have to put up with my math, uh, which might be less than accurate. So uh just go to Shirley DeVries directly. So William, thank you for your work and thank you for your committee for that uh work um on uh that first matter uh uh regarding overtures um one and two. We appreciate that work and have acted on it. Uh, we'll go on to the rest of your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second item on our report deals with consideration of a Neeland Avenue CRC matter. We had as material background quite a number of overtures. And I'll not go into any detail with regard to any of those specific overtures, but simply to set the context for this conversation. To recognize that there were seven overtures, overtures four through ten in the listing that requested that some form of admonishment or discipline would be put in place with regard to Neeland Avenue. And there was one overture that asked for a rescinding of a letter that had been sent to Neeland Avenue by the Council of Delegates. Then there were some additional uh correspondences letters and there was some late correspondence and following the proper procedure and protocol with regard to late materials that was evaluated by our executive director, Colin Watson, and the recommendation was to receive that material for background information only. Seeing that it was late, uh, was not properly before us, but according to our rules of procedure, if it deals with a matter that's already on the agenda and if reasons for its lateness are given, a judgment can be made to pass that on for information to the committee. So we simply acknowledge that that was received. And according to our rules, it doesn't need to be answered and it doesn't need to be included in the list of materials before us. So dealing with the materials that we had, these are our observations. The C O D acting on behalf of Synod is uncharted territory. And there are no clear church order rules to regulate how to deal with matters like this. It's a delicate balance between overstepping the reach of the C O D and failing to act on significant and timely matters for the well being of the denomination. Then having been said, the Advisory Committee offers the following observations. We have deep respect for the people and ministry of Neeland Avenue Christian Reformed Church over many decades. We were moved by Michael's letter and the documentation of the long history of conversation that the church has had. We acknowledge that there are times when we want to speak to something that is high priority. And that urge may lead us to break the rules or bend processes. At the same time, what Neeland Avenue CRC did was outside of our denominationally held position and good order. We have covenanted together as a denomination to abide by a shared commitment to biblical interpretation and pastoral care. And we'll change them only through appropriate processes. To act outside of these things hurts the broader community. On the Neeland Avenue matter, the C O D has already acted. A letter of admonishment was sent to the council on behalf of the C O D. It acknowledged our disappointment in their actions and lamented the breaking of community that resulted. If we go further than that, it's outside of the scope of our mandate. The C O D cannot discipline a local council. Anything we do would be interim until Senate twenty twenty two acts. As a C O D, we urgently request all congregations to prayerfully maintain unity and to live within the process and procedures of our covenant. This includes taking a posture of listening to each other and to those with whom we disagree. Recommendations. That the C O D on behalf of Synod defer action on overtures and other communications regarding the Neeland Avenue CRC matter, overtures four through ten, and refer them to Senate twenty twenty two for action. While pleading with all congregations in the denomination to maintain covenant with each other and respect proper process with regard to these matters. Grounds. The C O D has already addressed this matter in previous response and communication. The report of the committee to articulate a foundation laying biblical theology of human sexuality, which will be received and acted of by Senate twenty twenty two, will provide a natural opportunity to deliberate and make decisions regarding these matters. In fact, the actions of Senate twenty twenty two in regard to this report will heavily influence a proper response to Neeland Avenue CRC's actions. And here, the following negative vote is registered with the Advisory Committee by Laura Copley. Two, that the C O D on behalf of Synod not accede to overture eleven. Grounds. The C O D in its previous letter to Neeland Avenue CRC dated October twenty nine, twenty twenty acted in accordance with the denomination's position. Any C O D actions by their very nature are received and evaluated by the next Senate. Would be better for Senate twenty twenty two to evaluate the appropriateness of the letter and to be decided by the C O D acting in lieu of Senate. There's a third recommendation there similar to the second one previously uh in the previous matter, that the C O D on behalf of Synod declare the previous two recommendations to be its response to overtures four to eleven. Again, that might be implicit in the preceding recommendations. But since the first recommendation doesn't directly say accede or not accede, but rather to defer, there's perhaps an element of ambiguity. But again, as chair, you could simply rule that those previous two recommendations, if they carry uh would constitute that answer to the overtures four to eleven. That's our report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, William. Um, regarding um item number three, I will uh so rule, I think, when we get to that point. Um, because I do think it's implicit in um recommendation one and two, that this is our answer to those overtures. But let's take these uh one at a time. But let's take these, uh, one at a time. Um, so we will go to recommendation, uh, number one. And that is that the COD on behalf of Synod defer action on overtures and other communications regarding the Neeland Ave CRC matter, overtures four through 10, and refer them to Synod 2022 for action while pleading with all congregations in the denomination to maintain covenant with each other and respect proper processes with regard to these matters. That motion is on the floor and open for discussion, debate, uh, questions for clarification. The speaker queue, uh, is open, and if you wish to speak to this, um, recommendation, uh, you can do so now by getting into the speaker queue. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the motion before us?
Paul, am I, it says that I'm in the speaker queue. Am I not registering?
You were a moment ago, but you disappeared. So why don't you go ahead? And now it's coming back up for me. So go ahead, Laura. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, um, thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, I, I first would like to just, uh, express, um, appreciation for the advisory committee one's discussion that we had on these matters as Pastor Koopmans, our chair, it alluded to a little bit ago. It was a very good discussion and one in which, um, I, I benefited from. But I want to explain why I registered, uh, this negative vote. And I also want to, um, uh, put forward perhaps a consideration of a, of another path. Uh, before I do any of that, I do want to acknowledge the difficulty of this topic for anyone, whether it be a delegate or those that are participating, um, in the live stream. Uh, even discussion on this matter is one that makes hearts break and strains beloved relationships. So nothing about this is easy for anyone in, in this. Um, and yet here's why I, I feel I must speak. It's because real people are affected whenever God's word is relativized. I, I have seen, uh, the hard truths of God's will and ways bring real hope and healing to real people, including into my own life. And so, um, I feel, uh, I cannot and our denomination must not minimize the clear teaching of scripture. No ideology is more compassionate than our covenant God. He does do all things well and his laws are always for our good. So believing that scripture is profitable to teach, tribute, correct, train, uh, including those scriptures that call us to hold each other accountable. Um, this is where I'm at. I do stand with the advisory committee, um, in acknowledging that it is not the COD's role to enact disciplinary action. And yet my negative vote is registered because I do believe admonishing actions are still incumbent upon us. Just because the COD defers all disciplinary action to Synod 2022 doesn't mean that we defer our responsibility to, at this juncture, speak into a matter that is affecting and continues to affect our whole denomination. Here's some grounds for why I believe it's incumbent upon us. Um, our COD governance handbook in the section regarding the COD mandate states relative to the congregations and classes that COD is called to quote, "Perform an intermediary role with three functions." One of those functions is quote, "To assist churches in discerning factors that affect effective ministry." Is it effective ministry to unilaterally bypass church order processes? What is our intermediary role in this? Additionally, our governance handbook states that quote, "The COD itself may judge that Synod would be well-served by a formal communication in response to a matter on Synod's agenda uh, that affects ministry that falls under the governance of the COD." Once again, every ministry that is under COD governance is affected if the action to unilaterally bypass church order processes, uh, provides any encouragement to go and do likewise. In both these two places in our governance handbook, as well as the precedent that the COD has done in the past with giving statements or, um, more informal kind of laments. Uh, the COD has shown that it's got admonishing options before it. And so here's what I propose. If the COD could have a second recommendation to the motion on the table, that would be that the COD send a formal communication to Synod 2022, reaffirming our letter of admonishment and grave concern to Neeland and urging Synod to be mindful of the three marks of the true and vital church. We could add a more explicit ground for this in sending a formal communication which reaffirms our letter from October 2020. Um, that in a time of denominational turmoil, we might act as a preventative measure to keep other churches from taking independent actions which ignore the church order. The picture I have in my mind about this is that the COD is indeed not the traffic officer that hands out speeding tickets. However, perhaps it can serve as a traffic sign, even a stop sign that reminds our beloved denominational community of the rules of the road for a functioning community. To this end, I would ask that the COD number one, stand with the advisory committee in emphasizing that the COD does not have um, disciplinary, uh, function. It is still different from Synod and it should, does not and should not enact discipline. But secondly, the COD ought to make more explicit to show, quote, "Our full agreement with what the CRCNA confesses as we uh, state every year in our statement of agreement." So I move that, um, and you'll have to tell me because I'm still a rookie when it comes to Robert's Rules of Orders. But, uh, what I'd like to, to move at some point is that a second recommendation would be added to the motion on the table that quote, "The COD would send a formal communication to Synod 2022, reaffirming our letter of admonition and grave concern to Neeland and urging Synod to be mindful of the three marks of the true church." Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. If, if I'm understanding you correctly, you would be speaking in favor of this recommendation. But then after we voted on this recommendation, you'd like to suggest a new recommendation as well.
Yeah, so that's, that, I wanted to test your mind on that, Paul. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, is, is that the procedure or it, or do, is this an amendment? Is this more properly an amendment to this motion?
I, I would judge that it's not really an amendment. It's a whole new motion. Um, and I think what I heard you say is you don't object to amendment number one. So you could see yourself voting for that, but then you would like to suggest to the body that you might want to make another motion regarding a communication.
Yeah, the, um, I guess the objection that I had to the, um, recommendation is that it's like deferring all action or communication and, uh, to, and referring it to Synod CO, uh, 2022. When, when I would like to still to, I'd like to add the adjective defer all disciplinary action or, or, um, but, but, but still have some kind of, um, communication directly to Synod 2022 reaffirming our letter.
And, and I'm saying, Laura, I think the way to do that is to vote first on this motion and then to make a second because I think adding that to this recommendation sufficiently changes it. But I think I defer to William to see if he agrees with that. He's the chair of our committee after all.
Thank you.
I would agree with that, Paul, and, and I think that the procedure that we've followed here, um, and that Laura had the opportunity to speak first is appropriate because if there was a majority report and a minority report, we would read the majority report. Then we would give an opportunity to hear the minority report, then the minority report would be tabled in order to go to the main motion, which is before us, which is the recommendation of the advisory committee. So I think, uh, intuitively, we've kind of followed that proper procedure of Synod. But I think too, to keep things clean, we ought to keep the recommendation as we have it and, uh, that Laura's suggestion could then come forward as a second motion after this discussion.
Thank you. That's what I'll rule then, Laura. So we'll be back to discussing the recommendation just as it is. And then you're free to make a motion after we act on this if you so desire.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And we go to the, uh, speaker queue. I have, um, Tyler and then Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm wondering, I know in this recommendation, it talks about, uh, their recommendation one, it uses, excuse me, the language of pleading with all congregations in the denomination to maintain covenant with each other and respect proper process with regard to these matters. Um, and I read that and I know some of the, you know, as we've been outlined for us, some of the history of this. Um, the, I, I guess one of my concerns is that the, um, proper process has been engaged in by a lot of different congregations and classes. They have properly been going, you know, going to their brother, uh, to Neeland Avenue and communicating with them and communicating to the COD. It seems like the issue here is, is with Neeland Avenue, having been repeatedly pled with. And I guess that's my wondering why the recommendation is we're going to continue to plead with them. Um, even though they have been repeatedly pled with, um, and have been pled with a number of times by many different individuals, including by this body. So why, why continue to plead with them, um, even though it hasn't resulted in any change? And I guess, uh, you know, I'm reflecting, it's summertime, it's hot out here in West Michigan, a lot of places, hot out, summer. Um, and I, and I remember back to, um, a couple of years ago, I was gathering with a bunch of friends and we were at a pool gathering with their kids. And one of the parents, uh, the, the child was in the pool and it was time to get to the meal table and they said, time to get out of the pool. The child heard it, but just kept swimming. And they said, okay, time to get out of the pool. The child just kept on swimming and the parents are like, okay, okay, you know, Billy, whatever his name is, um, I'm not going to say that here. Please get out of the pool. And they, and they kept calling him to plead out to come out of the pool and he never came out of the pool. And so eventually the question is, are they being good parents at that point? You know, we're all really listening in on this. We're seeing this happen. Um, and, and I use it as an illustration. I ask that question because in many ways we now are meeting in lieu of Synod. That's our role as a COD in a unique role right now. Um, and, and this illustration, I guess we are the parents, it seems like here. Um, we're gonna later on today, we're gonna uphold the deposition of a minister, for instance. That's something only Synods would do, but we're gonna do that. Um, we are going to be acting in many ways and significant ways that Synod has and that will impact people's lives and livelihoods. And we say we have the authority to do that. We have the authority to hold up a deposition of a minister being removed from office, for instance. That's a big deal. And I, and I bet you that's gonna pass and there's probably not even going to be any discussion about the weightiness of this. Um, in terms of what we are taking upon ourselves as the authority. We, we've been entrusted, I know we had that training, what was it, the other, um, the other time, um, about our fiduciary responsibility, our duty um, as a governing board. And, and so I'm reminded of that too, uh, that we have to uphold the, the good order of the church and we have to, um, put forward the covenanted upon vision of mission of the church. And eventually, you know, my question is, and my concern about this, and I'd speak against this recommendation. It, it talks about pleading, but, but eventually we've pled enough, I wonder. And when do we start to enforce the standards of previous synods? It's not even our standard. These are synatical, ongoing synatical, um, decisions that have been made. Um, and it seems like if we just keep letting the child swim in the pool and, uh, we're not going to do anything, that reflects, you know, I ask the question, are we being good parents? Are we upholding our fiduciary responsibility? And recommendation one, seems like it doesn't have us upholding our fiduciary responsibility as a board. Whether we even like the decisions of previous synods, um, because of this issue. So I'd speak against this, uh, recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and I think we can deal with, excuse me, deal with this in another way if we turn this down.
Thank you, Tyler. I have Bruce DeCam and then Drew Sweetman. And William, if at any point you want to jump in, please do so.
Thank you, Paul. Can everyone hear me since I have had trouble? Yes, okay, thank you. There's two, two things I, I really wanted to ask about here a little bit. If we passed this, uh, a recommendation at, as it states, uh, to defer everything to, uh, Synod 2022. Um, it's almost, uh, anything that Laura had said is, is almost moot. It, it, we're, we're not doing anything with it. Uh, so we really couldn't go any further, um, if this is passed. So, uh, that's, that's the one, uh, part of it of what I'm, of what I'm wondering. And, and the other part that I was wondering is, did, um, the committee ever consider, uh, what happens if Synod doesn't meet next year? Or what would happen if it didn't meet the year after that? At, other words, at what point in time does the COD say that it is their responsibility to do something for the sake of the denomination about this issue? Did they ever consider time, timeliness of, of a CODs or are we again, just punting the football down the field? So did, did they talk about, William, did you talk about it? What would happen if, uh, there was a protracted amount of time that, that Synod would not, would not meet? Did you, did you ever consider that in your committee?
Respond to that, Mr. Chair. We did, we, we did not specifically deal with the hypothetical situation that Synod 2022 would not meet. Uh, we were aware of Church Order Article 33B. And the wording I think there is important. Um, so the wording there is each classes shall appoint a classical interim committee and Synod shall appoint the Council of Delegates of the CRCNA to act for them in matters which cannot await action by the assemblies themselves. Such committees shall be given well-defined mandates and shall submit all their actions to the next meeting of the assembly for approval. We're aware of the fact that the wording to act for them in matters which cannot wait is subject to being interpreted by different individuals according to their own level of patience or impatience, their own level of understanding of what's most urgent or less urgent. And so we really don't have a precedent. That's why we said we're in uncharted territory here. And we did not make this recommendation to answer the question. We did not make this recommendation uh, taking into consideration a percentage of, of degree of probability that Synod 2022 would not meet. In fact, I think we make this recommendation with the, uh, the faith, the hope and the prayer that Synod 2022 will meet and will be the next assembly.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. But, uh, then good, could I also have an answer to the first part of that is that if this was passed, and I'm not in favor of this being passed, but if it was passed, would that also uh, make a determination that really we couldn't do anything like Laura said and add uh, more, uh, things to, to this or, or could that be done, do you think?
My opinion on that is that Laura's motion would certainly, um, be legitimately before the body and would not, should not be ruled out of order uh, as a perceived conflict with deferring action on the overtures and other communications. The overtures and other communications had a whole list, uh, a whole range, a whole spectrum of, uh, responses and, and reactions and that kind of thing. And this, uh, deferring of those overtures, I don't think precludes COD, COD saying, but this is what we will do or say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, William, and thank you, Bruce. I have Drew Sweetman and then Elsa Fenema.
Thank you, Paul. Um, Tyler previously addressed the issue of the authority of COD and um, I am equally unclear on that authority. And I am equally unclear on that authority and sensing some inconsistencies between what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do relative to what Senate does. But I guess my greater concern is that, talking about the uncharted territory, if we are, if we are able to act with the authority of Senate and we're perhaps choosing not to or feel like we can't, I'm wondering what authority Senate has relative to this issue, and I'm equally unclear on that. So if there's some clarification on what Senate can do relative to C O D, I'd like to hear that.
Thank you. Thank you, Drew. You want to provide an answer to that question or take a stab at it, William, as Chair?
I'm willing to do that. There are Church Order provisions, of course, that give more detail and flesh out the responsibility of Senate relative to classes than the C O D relative to classes. So for example, Church Order Article 27 says that Senate has a broader authority than classes and a delegated authority over the classes. And Article 28B of the Church Order says that a major assembly shall deal only with those matters which concern churches in common or which could not be finished in the minor assemblies. And then, of course, Article 30 of the Church Order talks about appeal processes and that kind of thing. And so all of these articles in the Church Order really channel material towards Senate as the broadest assembly of the denomination and as the delegated authority that deals with all of the matters that the denomination that, that are pertinent to the denomination at large and the unfinished businesses of classes and so on. So I, I think that there's clearly a different description of the authority of Senate than the interim authority of the Council of Delegates. Again, that becomes a judgment call and individuals may judge that somewhat differently. And the C O D could, in, in theory, judge that because of the weightiness of this matter and the urgency of it, et cetera. That would have to be justified, of course, and that, that would then mean that there would be an accountability to Senate. And some members of the C O D may be very comfortable with that, others may not be comfortable with that. But then we would get into, I would predict, a very, very complex wrangling over how do you determine what can wait and what cannot wait?
I guess I'd like to follow that up, just wondering because classes Grand Rapids East has not acted here, does that present an issue to Senate 2022?
Drew, Kathy Smith also has some comments on the first part of your question and maybe this question, but I would remind us that classes Grand Rapids East did in fact act. They, they did not act the way some would like perhaps, but they did in fact act, they've been involved in this process. Kathy, do you have, you asked for the floor to help us with some of the matters of what synatical authority is and so forth.
Yes, thank you. And for those who may not know me, I Paul, it's to say anything, but I am here as an advisor for Church Order Matters, which is the role that I play at Senate and have done at the C O D meetings last year and this year in lieu of Senate. I think it's important to clarify, yes, that the C O D is acting on behalf of Senate and, and therefore has to take care of some matters, but it also does need to follow proper processes. And I was pleased that the recommendation speaks to all congregations maintaining covenant with each other and respecting proper process with regard to these matters. Because certainly it wouldn't be right to unilaterally bypass any Church Order processes. The fact of the matter in this situation is that the background states the C O D cannot discipline a local council. The fact of the matter is that Senate cannot do that either unless it has an appeal before it. Senate has reinforced this, this reality several times. Recently in 2015, Senate said very clearly that Senate cannot instruct a classes or a council to exercise discipline except upon appeal because the discipline of church members is the responsibility of the local council. So I think it's important to note in this conversation that Senate itself, which the C O D is acting in lieu of, Senate itself cannot take a matter and impose discipline unless it has been appealed to them by a proper process. That has not happened in these cases. The overtures, many of them, ask for Senate to instruct discipline to, to be exercised. But that would not follow our, our proper processes. And in fact, one of the overtures, let's see, I think it's number eight. Number eight has an appendix that lists a number of instances in which Senate did act in various matters and did act and, and did make decisions regarding discipline in, in local churches and with individuals. But almost all of those cases were in response to appeals or were cases where the matter came legally before Senate. In one case, a classes decision did not give the concurrence of synatical deputies. And so that then proper procedure is to go to Senate. Out of those 11 instances, 10 of them actually prove the point that Senate must follow proper procedures. One of the instances is a very complex case of 100 years ago that we would need a church historian to help us sort out. But all is to say that I think it's very important, as the recommendation states, that everyone respects proper processes and that neither Senate nor the C O D on behalf of Senate can instruct a church or a classes to exercise discipline without an appeal before it. And that is not the case in this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. We have Elsa and then Roger. We're speaking to recommendation one that is in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I am speaking to that and partly to what was said before about the parents not discipling their child. It made me think that God deals with us as a parent and he doesn't stop pleading with us. And, and at the same time, he does allow us to exercise our will and our conscience. And I'm not sure that he's always pleased with the, what we do. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure that he isn't. And so I'm wondering, if God works with us in love, could we not do the same? Should we not be also dealing with each other in a gracious way? I just want to remind us that I think we need to I look at what the procedures are and the processes are, but I think we also need to look at how we deal with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa, and Roger Sparks.
Roger Sparks here from Menkota. Just a couple of things. I've, I've been listening with great interest to the discussion about what our role is as the Council of Delegates meeting in lieu of Senate. And there's a sense in which I think we have to take off our Council of Delegates hats and put on, and in lieu of Senate delegates hats. Because basically everything we're doing here the next couple of days is beyond our role, our regular mandate as a Council of Delegates. So to feel like we're going beyond our normal Council of Delegates role, well, of course we are, because that's what we have been appointed to do, and that means addressing matters related to the, the health and wellbeing of our churches, including these moral concerns. Also, I noticed that the recommendation before us refers to deferring any disciplinary matters or actions to Senate 2022. Since, you know, the Human Sexuality Report is coming to next year's Senate. And as it says, it might be just the right opportunity for a Senate to take action. My concern there is that the overtures are not based on what Senate 2022 might do or might not do with the Human Sexuality Report, but rather they're based on what the current moral position and stance, even confessional stance of our denomination is. And the fact that we have one, maybe more churches that are simply ignoring that and going their own way. So I, I think it's wrong to figure that Senate 2022, dealing with the Human Sexuality Report, well, you know, maybe they'll change the stance anyway, so why, why deal with this now? I think we have to take some sort of action now beyond pleading with all the churches. I think if we're going to plead instead of instruct, we should plead especially with Nealon Avenue to cease and desist their covenant breaking. And if that's considered discipline, you know, so be it. But I, I think we have to say something directly to them. We've corresponded with them once. We've gotten an answer back saying, thanks, but no thanks for your input. And I, I think we have to go beyond asking Senate 2022 to deal with this matter. We have to speak in love, even though it might not feel like love, because that might seem very firm and so forth. But in love, I think we have to address Nealon Avenue. And yeah, whether it's instruct or plead, however it's worded, I think we have to speak to them in their situation, which is really what, you know, these several overtures are asking the Senate to do. And here we are in lieu of Senate. So I, I think we have to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. I am judging that we are ready to vote on this matter. I see no one in the speaker queue. We are voting on recommendation number one from this committee. That is that the C O D on behalf of Senate defer action on overtures and other communications regarding Nealon Avenue CRC matter, overtures four through 10, and refer them to Senate 2022 for action while pleading with all congregations in the denominations to maintain covenant with each other and respect proper processes with regard to these matters. That's the recommendation. Please vote in the yes, no, voting link, yes or no? Please vote yes or no? All right, that motion has carried. That recommendation has carried.
Paul, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Could I just register my negative vote? I think we have to mention that right away.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Yes, your negative vote is recorded.
Mark, Mark Van Dezen here would like to register my negative vote in this as well. Thank you.
So noted?
Negative vote.
Roger, and I saw Ralph Woboldus and, and Wendell and Bruce DeCam. Did I miss anyone?
George Young.
George Young registering a negative vote.
Tony Lada, negative vote.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Sherry Falkam, are you trying to regular, okay. Sherry Falkam also recording a negative vote. Drew Sweetman, you're recording a negative vote. Dangerous question to ask, but anyone I, anyone else, anyone I missed? All right, thank you.
Just a point of order question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mark.
Mark Van Dezen, wondering, do you share the results of that vote or is that non-shareable information?
I don't, I don't, I don't, it's not typically shared at Senate, so I'm just sharing that it passed.
Thank you.
All right.
May I say last year that the banner shared all the negative votes on some of the action we did last year, so that may come out again.
Yeah, yes, indeed. The banner is here and we're doing this live on YouTube as well. So yes, indeed, that's all, all there for the record. All right, this brings us back to our committee. We've just passed recommendation number one.
Mr. Chair, in terms of our agreed procedure, we were, we had agreed that we would pause at this point to allow Laura, if she so chose, to suggest an additional recommendation.
Thank you, William. Laura, do you wish to do that?
Yes. So, and I sent it to Dee, the, the additional recommendation. Dee, if you've got that, I, I, I sent the motion as well as a couple grounds.
All right.
That be sent?
Yes, it's there in the chat. I will read it for the sake of those of you who are listening and watching. And the motion that Laura is suggesting is that the C O D send a formal communication to Senate 2022, reaffirming our letter of admonition and grave concern to Nealon and urging Senate 2022 to be mindful of the three marks of the true and vital church. And there are two grounds. One, that the Governance Handbook of the C O D states that the C O D itself may judge that Senate would be well-served by a formal communication in response to a matter on Senate's agenda. Number two, in a time of denominational turmoil, it is incumbent on the C O D to reaffirm our denominational commitments and add further weight in hopes of prevention of other church taking independent action which by, which bypasses church order. That is the motion with the two grounds that Laura is suggesting. And you're so moving, right, Laura?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All right, it is moved and supported. It is on the floor for our discussion. You, again, you can see the language in the, in the chat there. That motion is before us for conversation. Please put your name in the speaker queue if you'd like to speak to the motion in front of us now. We have already had some conversation broadly around this topic. I think we all understand the motion. Melissa Van Dyke.
Yes, a question of clarification. As we just voted to defer the overtures and matters, will those now go to Senate 2022 as the original overtures? Or is there some other way that this will be communicated to Senate 2022?
My understanding, Melissa, is that they will go to Senate as the original overtures unless in some way the classes or churches that sent them choose to revise them, which of course is always their right. Michael Tenhaiken.
Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, I'll speak in favor of this motion. I, I feel like it strikes a healthy balance between not overstepping our bounds as what the C O D can do here in lieu of Senate, but also recognizing our, our desire, at least my desire, to communicate something about, about this matter. And so for those reasons, I'll speak in favor of this motion.
All right, Michael, thank you. I see no other speakers in the queue at this point. Are we ready to vote on this motion? Seeing no other speakers and, uh, hearing no one trying to jump in, uh, because I'm missing them. I judge that we are in fact ready to vote, so I will call the question. Again, the motion is in your chat for all you delegates, you've heard it coming from Laura. Um, we are voting yes or no, uh, on the motion that's printed in the chat. Yes or no regarding sending a communication?
Paul?
Yes, Roger?
Uh, this is Roger, um. Since our letter refers to Neyland, uh, specifically. Uh, would it be proper to, uh, sort of, uh. Send them a copy of this so they know that, uh, we have referred to them? And then they can read directly to, uh, not just in the banner or somewhere else. Uh, but what we are saying to Senate, would that be appropriate? I'd like to see that happen.
It seems to me that it would be, I mean, it will be a, a, a letter that is publicly acknowledged from our minutes. I don't think there'd be any problem sending a copy directly to Neyland. And also rule without objection. If we pass the motion, of course. So we're voting on the, on the motion in front of us in the chat, please vote yes or no? And that motion has passed. So the motion from, uh, Laura, which is now our motion, um, has passed. This brings us back to our committee work, William.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next recommendation is that the C O D on behalf of Senate not accede to Overture 11. Um, and just for summary again, because it's a little while ago since we. Refer to this, Overture 11 was asking for a rescinding of the letter of October 29, 2020. So the motion is that Senate on behalf, that C O D on behalf of Senate not accede to Overture 11. And on the grounds that are listed, which were previously read.
All right, and that motion is, uh, now in front of us. Again, we've had some discussion around this topic, uh, broadly. And given that we just decided to send another communication, uh, on this matter. Uh, that might color the way we think a little bit about this motion as well. But it's on the table in front of us for conversation or discussion or questions. I'm seeing no one in the speaker queue. Oh, here we go, Andy DeRider.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. This is one of these things that because of the position we're in, I, I just have trouble with. We, we made a decision as C O D to send the letter. Now we're asking not to accede to an overture objecting about the letter. So we're kind of sitting on two sides of the table here, and I, and I know it's probably no other way to doing it, but it does make things uncomfortable. With the best way to forward to go is with this, so. Um, I'll support it, but. Holding my nose if I can say that, well, I have to do it.
All right, thank you, Andy. I'm seeing Kathy Smith raising her hand. Yes, Kathy, did you wish to address this?
I would like to ask a question, um. You clarified for Melissa that overtures four through 10 would be. On the agenda for Senate 2022 because they are be, they've been deferred now. So they were referred to Senate 2022. I find this recommendation, I'm, I'm not clear, the recommendation is to not exceed to Overture 11. So I assume then that it would not go to Senate 2022. But the second ground says that it would be better for Senate 2022 to evaluate the appropriateness of the letter. Um, so that seems a bit confusing. Um, and maybe you could help with that, or, or if. And if it is confusing, then I wonder if the same action as was done to the previous. Overtures would be more appropriate, so that's my question.
Do, do you have a response on behalf of the committee, William?
It's the understanding of the committee, I think that, um, Senate would evaluate the work of the C O D. So to that extent, it certainly would be on the agenda of Senate. Uh, but, and, and maybe there needs to be further conversation with regard to this. But I think it was also the understanding of the program committee. That any overtures that were submitted to the C O D in lieu of Senate. And were acted upon would certainly be sent as background information, uh, to Senate as well.
So if I can summarize what I think you're saying, William, it, it. Although technically we're acting on the overture, not technically, we are in fact acting on the overture and not acceding to it. The material of that overture and the question of that overture would still be before Senate.
That would be my understanding.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are we ready to vote on this motion? I have no one in the speaker queue. All right, again, um, go to the yes, no voting link and vote yes or no. For recommendation number two, that the C O D on behalf of Senate not accede to Overture 11. And that motion passed. And regarding, uh, recommendation three there, I, I think again, William is correct that essentially we've already. Um, noted our responses to those overtures, so number three, it's already implicit. So, uh, I'll rule that that is our response to overtures four and 11. Back to you, William.
Yeah, so, Paul, I'm just seeing that there was a note that came in in the chat, and I want to be transparent about that. Um, so Dee sent a note saying that's not my understanding for everything that the C O D addressed in 2020 and 2021. That adds the minutes of the C O D special meeting will be ratified, however. And so the way I worded it was, I thought that that material would be made available as background material. Uh, that's the word that I use as background information. So it perhaps is not a formal. Overture to Senate, but it's part of the package of background information. As Senate evaluates and either approves or does not approve of the work of the C O D. Uh, but if, but if there's disagreement with regard to the implications of that, we need to talk about how that gets. Formally. Decided and probably sooner rather than later. So, uh, if there are people that need to have a conversation about that over lunch or something like that, I think it's helpful for us to do that. Rather than simply, uh, saying. The exact consequences of what we voted on are still up for discussion, I think we need to have clarity on that, so.
So are you, are you suggesting that some people get together over our break in a few minutes? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think that that might be helpful for us just to make sure that we understand, um, what's going to happen. Because I think otherwise it puts our staff and it puts program committee in a very awkward position going forward, so.
And who should be part of that conversation, William?
Well, uh, certainly staff, I think yourself and, um, the vice chair of, of this meeting. And there's, there's one other person from the programs committee beside myself that happens to be on the C O D, that's, um, Melissa Van Dyke. And so maybe if there could simply even be, uh, a bit of a, a quick conference right after this when we break for lunch. And then we can talk about, you know, how we make sure that we're clear on it and that there's no ambiguity for the C O D. Because, uh, ambiguity would not, uh, on this would not serve the C O D or any of the parties well.
Good, we'll have that conversation at, when we take our lunch break in just a minute, William. Let's see if we can finish with, uh, your recommendation. Oh, I have someone in the speaker queue, I'm sorry, I, I almost missed you, Elsa.
I was, um, I was believing or hoping what William said was going to happen, that the. Senate would get this overture as well, so if it doesn't, I would like my negative vote recorded.
Okay, so we'll sort of hold that until the group talks, right Elsa?
Yes, please, thank you.
Let's see if we can finish with the other material of your committee, William.
Okay, uh, the next item is one of gratitude to retiring committee members. And, uh, this pertains then to. The Ecumenical and Interfaith Relations Committee. And the recommendation is that the C O D on behalf of Senate express gratitude to Roberta Friesma for her services to the Judicial Code Committee. And secondly, that the C O D on behalf of Senate express gratitude to Kathy Smith and John Ten Einheiss. Preserving the cause of ecumenicity for the CRC. So there's two, two areas of appreciation, Judicial Code Committee. And Ecumenical and Interfaith Relations Committee with the completion of Terms of Service. Those recommendations, one at a time, would be moved by our advisory committee.
Okay, let's take recommendation number one, and that's that the C O D on behalf of Senate express gratitude to Roberta Friesman for her service to the Judicial Code Committee. All in favor? Uh, let's see a show of hands. Just keep them up for a minute so I can quick toggle through my screens. All right, and are there any opposed? Please put your hand up if you are opposed. All right, that motion carries with thanks to Roberta. And then number two is that the C O D on behalf of Senate express its gratitude to Kathy Smith. And to John Ten Einheiss for serving the cause of ecumenacy in the CRC. All in favor, a show of hands. Keep them up for just a minute, or just a couple of seconds here. And put your hands down, are there any who are opposed, raise your hand. All right, and that motion carries as well. I think Kathy is the only person, uh, with us, uh, or maybe, uh, either Roberta or John are listening live. If you are, thank you very much for your work and, uh, we appreciate it, uh, very much. We are going to take our lunch break now, um, having completed the work. Um, and in just a moment, I'm gonna ask, uh, Bernie Bacher to, Bernie Backer to pray for us. But I want to note that we do have three letters from, um, our ecumenical partners. You can find those letters in the resource, uh, uh, tab, um, on the, um, uh, on the. Link that is there for this particular meeting. So if you wish to read those three letters, you may certainly, uh, do so. We're simply receiving those for information, so I don't want you to miss those letters. Um, uh, you'll be able to see them. And from, uh, Dee Recker before our prayer, just those of you who are, those of us who are gonna meet briefly to determine the matter we were just speaking about. We're gonna get a, a breakout, um, invitation to, to go to that. All right, Bernie, can you lead us in prayer? And then we're gonna be, uh, on break till just 1:30, so I am stealing a few minutes of your lunchtime. Uh, with apologies, but let's try to come back right at 1:30 Eastern, uh, for the second part of our session. Bernie?
Yes, I will be referring to some of the prayer requests out of those three letters that we received. From the, uh, other, uh, ecumenical organizations. Also, I wanted to say thanks to those who prepared the, the virtual prayer service. For us as a C O D. I think that was held last week. If, if you did, like myself, did not have the opportunity to see it earlier. Or to participate in it earlier, I encourage you to do so, whether tonight or tomorrow morning before we meet again. I, I found it very moving, very, um, yeah, encouraging that we have, there are people who are praying for us. As we go through our, our deliberations. And we can't do it without the Spirit's help. Let's, let's pray. May God, may you be gracious to us and bless us. May you make your face to shine upon us. So that your ways may be made known on earth. Your salvation among all nations. May the peoples praise you, God. May all the peoples praise you. May the nations be glad and sing for joy. You rule the peoples with equity, and you guide the nations of the earth. You led us this morning, oh Lord, in our decisions that we made from, uh, Committee One. Thank you for their work. Thank you for the, the implementation that needs to be made now. Uh, be with the leadership team as they go through the restructuring process. Grant them what they need as they move forward. We also pray, Lord, that you would grant us patience with each other on matters that we are not on the same page. May we learn to focus our eyes on Jesus. And may we see each other as your servants, seeking to live out the gospel. We pray for your church throughout the world. There is but one church with one mission that's called to live out the good news. We pray for the reformed church in America as they meet in person this fall. Keep them safe in their travels, especially in this time of pandemic. Holy Spirit, as they lean on you, enable them to show respect and care for one another. As they discern your word, lead them. Be with the global Christian form as in this time of, of social distance protocols. Thank you for the technology that they were able to use to encourage each other in ministry. Bless their plans for a global gathering in 2024. And we pray that the global pandemic does not evolve into a widening epidemic. In the developing world, eroding the gains made in the reduction of poverty and economic development. We remember the work of the Evangelical Fellowship of Canada. As they bring denominations and Christian organizations together. To lead in such areas as Refugee Resettlement Initiative. Stewarding sacred seeds amongst the indigenous population. These are ministries of opportunity in Canada. As we process, Lord, the killing of a Muslim family in London, Ontario last week. And the discovery of a burial plot of over 200 children as, at a residential school in Kamloops, British Columbia. Give us ears and hearts and minds and souls to listen to the pain of others. Who are trying to grasp what happened. Also, we need your leading and wisdom in living out our faith in public. As lead us, oh Lord, to be advocates for children and families caught up in pornography and prostitution. We advocate before governance, governments for the vulnerable in areas of euthanasia. And doctor-assisted suicide. And tensions that come as a result of conversion therapy. Lord, the list goes on and on. You know our needs, you know our hearts. Humble ourselves, we humble ourselves before you. And we ask for your leading and wisdom, that all may come to know you. May the peoples of the earth praise you, may all the peoples praise you. May the Lord bless us so that all the ends of the earth will fear you, oh Lord. In your name, guide us. In Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.